Shall we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Tuesday, twenty eighth, and calling the grading to order at six fourteen P M. Uh, establish roll call to establish formality. Tricia?
Here.
Vicky?
Here.
Kristen?
Here.
Laurel? Can you hear us Laurel? You can also type in the chat.
I hear you.
Laurel's on her phone and so she's seen the chat. I'm here. Leanna's here.
Would it be okay to receive since we do work and I thought she was here?
Yeah.
Um, proceed with one point three then, Yvonne. But she can't even hear us.
Oh, we don't.
Laurel?
Yeah, we're guessing she can't hear us, otherwise she would be.
Raise your hand if you can hear us. Laurel? Laurel, raise your hand if you can hear. She's still working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Sometimes when you go to your phone, the audio might be not connected.
Yeah.
Do we need to wait then?
She won't be able to hear them. Well, I think even without her, we have a form because there's two lessons for that.
Okay.
They sort of did not mean.
Okay.
She said she's working on trying to figure it out.
We'll go with just these few items, but yeah. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the room be full of contentment. May love abide him. Love one another, love our school, and love life itself. Let us remember that as many hands fill the house, so many hearts fill the school. Item one point four, uh, Ben and Martha Vichia.
We're gonna remove again, um, sadly, the, um, uh, update on the test, um, scores.
Cravelling, um, three point two. Any being, oh, yes. Not just.
There's a.
Yeah. Any notes that's good though? I'll know if you can move. Alright, uh, brings us to item one point five, audience to address the council. You'll get three minutes. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the council at this time. Seeing none. Uh, move to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent of the present. And this is Tricia. I'll make a motion to approve the consent of the present. I'm sorry. Is there?
Any comments or questions?
Oh, oh, yeah, any, yeah, discussion, any further?
Any further discussion on the agenda?
Of course.
Call the vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Laurel? Leanna?
Aye. Laurel gave a visual.
Thank you for your patience. My first time running the meeting. Then we'll bring us to, um, item three point one, grade level report. Sarah and, um, Mr. McMyer.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So, here is the, I hate hearing my voice echoing. Um, here is the slideshow that was shared at the parent council. If I can get it to work, why am I? Why is it not going? Everyone, everybody? Sorry, my computer is glitching.
Okay. Why we started late?
It seems to be the theme for tonight. Okay.
The print is very. Every breath, even back in the head too.
Driving up to ready, um, Thursday. It was a Friday.
Okay.
It was snowing.
Well, the, uh, PowerPoint is frozen, so I'm just gonna go ahead and say that things are going pretty well at the school. Things are busy. Um, we've had lots and lots of absences with specialty teachers needing to fill in, so that's always, um, kinda difficult for everybody, adjusting schedules, but appreciation for everybody working with that. And, yep, and it is still frozen, so I can't share that unfortunately, but other than that, nothing really to report. Um, Jennifer has been updating on her social media things with what's going on with her, and so she's in rounds of chemo and just doing what she can do there. And other than that, don't really have anything to report, so sorry, everybody, that the PowerPoint didn't work, and thanks.
Thanks.
So, check the, um, website later.
Oh, that's right. Good. Bring us to, um, evidence and four point one, the finance committee report. Tricia?
Um, so, yes, I, I went to finance and the highlights there, um, I think this, we mentioned already this year that we, we've had grants that were all over our helping youth years and they're helping us to cover expenses. Um, we will start to write a little bit how to move into the work. A little bit higher with the second thing. What are our comments are being pushed is get more rise. Which is kind of, we've been talking about that, so. Yeah. Um, it was that, uh, some of the stuff is probably not here, so. Uh, updated classroom pay scale. Name. Sleepovers. Yeah, so I think the rest of it, um, we are gonna talk about later on.
Tricia? Alright, um, myself reporting from the parent council room. Um, they are still discussing the Caljama fundraiser for the whole school. Um, nothing really chosen on that. That we're gonna go through a little coffee, that might just pick the one that's most, um, most popular, the insurance sales. Something really awesome, um, the PC gives thirty dollars to Ms. Jennifer for fundraiser, and I believe, um, the matching and on top of donation, correct?
But they're intending to be.
So, that was amazing. Hearing. The piece, um, Jennifer is joining, our second reading, Lady of Blue is, um, in, in treat, treating for cancer.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, I, that's one.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I thought that was just amazing. That was just approved across the board, so. Uh, they also talked about approval for a run for the music room so that they can do a lot more movement, especially in the younger grades. I think that's gonna be awesome for Mr. Henderson. And, um, they approved a six hundred dollars for events overall, I think, just in planning for Ms. Cheryl and things that we're always doing for the different Hanukkah, St. Lucia, lighting, Kwanzaa, everything ahead for candles and such. Getting in that atmosphere seems to be running very organized and planning ahead, and, um, it's been really great to be trying to get on those. Oh, Mr. Meyer? Thank you. I do speak quick, so please tell me to slow down, you guys.
Yeah, no, I raised my hand because I was able to get the PowerPoint going, so I don't know if we can back up, but if, if you all wanted me to share it, I could now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then watch it freeze as soon as I tried to do it again. Alright, so, here we go. Alright, so, together for the parent council meeting, and so eighth grade, uh, you see that they're working on the French Revolution. They've been writing journal entries from the perspective of Marie Antoinette, and it said it brought a few smiles to the readers. Um, and then, and more from, uh, the eighth grade, Ms. Madera, the students are creating heart pins for one of their many eighth grade fundraisers. And I believe right now, this class is actually performing Much Ado About Nothing in the great room, so those of you who are at the school, that might be happening right now. Um, and they, they just did their eighth grade projects as well, which is a huge part of the eighth grade experience. And so it looks like maybe this one was about Leonardo da Vinci, or maybe Renaissance artists, about nursing. So, the eighth grade project is a great opportunity for an eighth grade student to work with a mentor, to learn deeply about a subject they're interested in, and it's just, it's a great, great, um, thing that the kids do. Then, in seventh grade, Ms. Lee, the seventh graders pay a visit to kindergarten to shape and share bread, always, um, on the days when the kindergarten bread gets cooked, every single child that walks past says something to the effect of, oh, I remember that when I was in kindergarten, or if they weren't here in kindergarten, they're like, oh, I wish so much I was here in kindergarten. Um, sixth grade, Ms. Jones, they've been working on physics, and we have some main lesson pages about musical sounds, um, light, science of light. And it looks like perhaps this is a chalkboard draw, oh, this must be Ms. Jones' chalkboard drawing. In fifth grade, they're learning about botany and the world of plants. The Maple Rose kindergarten with, uh, teacher Cheryl, and you just see some examples. It says, many opportunities to develop pandi coordination in the kindergarten, chopping vegetables for our soup, stitching and cutting, pasting and drawing, and you see a young student here all fully gnome-decked out. And then, with me, kids of all ages, all the way up to adults, love playing with parachute. This is a game the kids love called, uh, Sharks of Life Guards, where they try to pull each other underneath the parachute, just having fun with the sixth graders here. Lower grade ten with, with Mr. Claire, two first graders with their chickens. This was the first project both students had finished this year. There were lots of challenges, but both persevered, and we have three second graders with their knitted bunny and bunnies and kitties. Uh, she says that there's lots of happy students in after-school handwork club. This is an opportunity for students who are enthusiastic about handwork to work on projects from class and also have free choice projects. I currently do this club two days a week and have a waitlist of about twenty students. It is a hopping scene after school. And then Spanish with Ms., Ms. Becca. Students have started learning of the cute salamander that makes its name in Mexico, the axolotl. This gave us the opportunity to see the different currencies countries use. Students were able to create their own bills featuring the axolotl, ask them about the axolotl song, and I have heard them singing it in the hallways. It's pretty cute. Uh, they, so they have lower grades dance and listening to La Cumbia del Monstro de la Guna. Uh, the guided dance helps relate words to body parts, ay las manos, los hombros, and they will be reading planting stories, the life of librarian and storyteller, uh, Pura Belpray, as an intro to learning about various folklore. And then there was a Jennifer update, but I already shared what I know about that. So, thanks for letting me jump back in to share that with you all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright. Going to, uh, four point three, the equity task force.
So, not a lot going on, it's right. Task force right now, we haven't been able to meet, but we are working on annually and having an inclusive, um, a, uh, assembly, so we had an assembly discuss, uh, life history, and this month we will do women's history, so we are continuing.
And Susan began with the four point four, the COVID nineteen response?
Yeah, I talked a little bit about it, um, before the meetings started, we have had, um, a good solid two weeks of, at least, maybe three now, of significant, um, absences primarily in the staff, students. We don't have reports that is, um, it is COVID per se, so not a lot of, like, student exposure, but definitely the staff is, um, thin, because, as Nick said, because we are, um, having a lot of absences and doing a lot of floating around, which, which, um, yeah, it makes it, for a lot of work, we have a team that is truly dedicated to the kids and the program and do everything they can to make it work, but, uh, hoping for a healthy march, we can say that. We're all hoping for a healthier march.
It's just been so cold, everybody got tired.
Yeah, lots of things.
Well, thank you for that. It looks like four point five one, the letter intent to renew lease. School site, I think, at four point three P M.
So, um, we had, have in your packet, the extended two-year lease now, um, for your approval, a few changes from what we had proposed then last month. Um, they asked me for five and a half percent for the twenty, twenty-four year, um, and they did ask for a full two years. Um, charity with year with. These one, and so that's where we are.
So, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, and forty?
Yeah.
Twenty-five? Just twenty-four, what about twenty-four, twenty-five?
They, they agreed to the three percent we requested, so.
I understand. The letter?
I was asking you to.
Do we need it up to approve? Are we okay?
Do you agree with it? Um, I.
Alex?
Yeah, it was freezing again.
Um, I will entertain. I can't remember about Laurel. No, it's Laurel. I had to approve the letter of intent.
This is Tricia making a motion to approve the letter of intent for renewal lease.
Thank you, Tricia. And this is Kim.
Now, one second.
Thank you, Vicky. The other side technical. Tricia?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laurel? Can't see her. I'm sure I see her. We'll go with Leanna?
Aye.
Laurel, do that thumb?
Laurel gave a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Our figure chief is. Great. Thank you. And, yes, and that brings us to four point six, policy review.
Yes, this is a, um, the travel expense policy. We are presenting this also to the finance committee to do some work on the details. But we haven't reviewed how much we cover and pay staff for travel for a good five years. And we have kept up as far as the mileage we use the IRS reimbursement rate, um, but wanting to have a good policy on the remainder of that, Maggie and I found ourselves with each other saying, so what do you think is right? What do you think is right? So, decided that maybe that wasn't the best way to make that decision. Um, we went to the California, um, the government's California State's, um, H R website and pulled their policies. So, um, this will be the first reading, and I have asked the finance committee to really think about it and do some detailed work for you all, um, but I wanted you all to take a chance, have a chance to look at it as well as moving into that. So, and of course, the policy has a, uh, two readings, so we'll look at it today. If you have any questions or concerns, um, Tricia and I can take it back to, well, actually, Vicky and I can take it back to the finance committee and say, these are some things that the board shared as well, so wanted to, um, get that here. So, I did not write, we pulled this off the, um, the state website, so I didn't write it, so if you have questions, that's good.
So, my only comment, when I kind of looked at it for the finance committee, was I don't think some of it are high enough, like breakfast is up to seven dollars, lunch is eleven. I know, like, I just traveled recently. You can't get breakfast for seven dollars. You can get a cup of coffee and you can do four dollars. And, um, so I don't think that those are high enough and, um, for the people that are asking the travel to be actually reimbursed with full travel there, so.
And they expect full reimbursement?
Well, I would think if we're asking them to travel, we should probably.
Yeah. Yeah. How often does that happen?
Yeah, I think it's training.
Well, um, teachers, many, many of the classroom teachers go, um, to summer train, stay on for five days. And I think that it is, we like to offer a couple of days a year to faculty or staff if we can. They don't necessarily do that, so, um.
That's so nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never.
Yeah.
Didn't have them except maybe the first couple of years I taught.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I do always focus on keeping them close so they travel to Sacramento and not to, you know.
Yeah.
Not flying flights, so they're cooperating. And of course, cost of money is expensive.
So, they cooperate and they are here.
So, we, we hold it, Maggie and I hold it pretty tight, and, and staff, you know, we, we love the year that we're able to do, um, summer training by, um, getting an air B and B or and all of the staff to stay together in-house. We try to do those kind of things whenever possible.
It's also a team, you know, they'll.
Yeah, it's definitely built, so.
My daughter Peru for teaching was mandatory every year, whether it was through the school or in Peru, they have to do certification every year, mandatory, public or private school, especially eighth or twelve. So, that's great for your.
Don't have anything like that.
Yeah.
And then the only, was there stuff in here for, like, um, like taxi, like if they Uber's or taxis or anything like that?
I don't remember.
Yes, they're not flying.
Incidental.
But, um, I just know, like, when I fly, I took, we don't technically rent a car and all the scooters for that.
Right.
So, like, being able to get reimbursed.
That tells you how long since we've been traveling, like, getting the shuttle. I don't probably do shuts anymore.
Yeah, I did get the pens, but maybe just making sure something like that is included and just in case we do, like, I know that they've been telling, like, organ a company and, like, revenue, like, all that stuff, but, um. It's just expensive to travel, and so I just, if they are doing it, I would hopefully, they're not going out, they're on topic.
Yeah. Alright, you need approval for the first reading?
No, we do not. It's just, read it the first time, and then the second time, I need to.
So, are we reading this to look for holes? Things that we want.
Like things like.
Exactly, like seven dollars for breakfast.
I saw it.
You know, so, and it's, it's the same with any policy, you know, we read it twice, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, and this is the state standard. We may agree with it or not.
Yeah.
But it was just felt better to come from this direction rather than.
Yeah.
I try to write.
Right, good start.
Yeah. Was just the place to start.
Okay, that will bring us into four point seven, contracts.
So, we have, um, have asked, we're asking to work with e-therapy, online or distance, basically, um, therapy, we, uh, for our, to replace our school psychologist. We had a school psychologist through December, and, um, she did a wonderful job for us, but moved on her way. We thought we had a new person coming in, but then they couldn't do that. So, um, I reached out to our cell phone representative, Sarah Phillips, and this is one of the agencies that she recommended that other members of the charter cell phone I have worked with. I've had a, um, a couple of interviews with them, and, um, what I'm seeing, and they know their stuff, they are licensed appropriately for, um, our, for California, and, um, so they come in distance and will, uh, meet with a student over, um, the computer, and mostly they, they are doing for the most part for us assessment plan. So, when a student is, we, um, is being proposed for special education, they're doing those assessments. Um, their cost is lower than having a person on-site, and, um, I have talked to them with potential, potentially about one student for actual, um, therapy or, or, um, counseling. Um, you know, sometimes families, um, are uncomfortable with using a counselor who is directly connected to the school. And so they're thinking, because that, that student, that counselor knows all the students in the school, and if they're struggling with two different students, then, you know, that sort of thing. So, um, this is an option. I'm also using, um, Emma Todd's services for that as well. It's, it's, it's just that kind of step away from the school, um, that's helpful. And also, Mandy, um, Kling and I are really working on making the school's counselor positions sustainable. We are, you know, we're seeing, especially since the fire, but even before that, so many children, um, with trauma and they're struggling, that, um, it becomes a pretty big, um, load, and so really trying to look at how to do that. One of the things we're talking about is moving our, um, group work, the friendship groups and greatness groups off of Mandy and having, and those groups do that, they're a little more flexible, and then, um, Mandy can really do the work with individual students that are on campus, so we need someone to help to it, some of that, um, the, um, uh, almost emergency services that come up. When a child comes to school and is dysregulating and unhappy and really needs to talk to somebody, then she can be more available for that, rather than, I'm, I'm sorry, we're gonna come over here, and I'm sorry you're breaking down and falling apart, but we're talking about friends.
Right.
You know, so it, it becomes, so doing some of that work with our counseling funds. So, this is really particularly for students with higher needs and are entitled to education, that would, um, serve as a therapy. And of course, uh, special education has its own funding.
And so that could be trouble with that too. And then just to, uh, clarify, we're leaving maybe some of the duties giving to the Emma Todd's circle that are gonna be on-site and work?
Yeah.
Cool. I remember that was kind of only as, as needed, so that's great to be.
Yeah, so they would be coming on-site to do, to run those.
Sounds great. I'm just working in the field, I work with baby dolls, and, um, more than not, we're getting more feedback that people like, um, doing the televent. They're more readily available, so they have more of a resource, so they're not just waiting for one person to be a person, and this is really kind of what it's going, you know, so if we have more people available, that's great, especially being so highly credentialed.
Right. And the flexibility they have, you know, one of the things, for example, is they have the ability to do counseling in Spanish.
Oh.
So, we don't have a big need for that, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be prioritizing that so much as far as our, um, student population, but to be able to have that kind of thing available when necessary, it, it's those kind of things that because they're a larger group, they can offer a different thing.
They're all very momly, um, services?
Yes.
What are the services and momly as well?
Um, I'm not sure, but they do have services and momly, but that's it.
That's great. Thank you. How many moms do we have? I was just asking in general for.
In general? I never, I actually don't think we have any moms students right now. We have Ukrainian, we have Mandarin, we have, we have like five different languages that we serve here, but I don't actually think mom is one of my names.
Do we need to approve this then?
Yes.
Alright, I will entertain a motion first to, for, for point seven, Laura.
I'll make a motion this time. Maybe, um, accept.
Thank you, Vicky. Uh, this is Tricia, I'll second. Thank you, Tricia. I like a couple of votes. Leanna? I see you. Give a thumbs up. Maybe, if it's not working. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Kristen?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
That brings us to four point eight, updated classified pay scale.
Alright, um, you approved the classified pay scale. It's just put into effect in August of last year. It is still current as far as the, um, the pay scale goes, but we did, um, see that we have some, um, descriptions in the classifications that were no longer, um, accurate, so things like the, um, festival support has been added in, the wellness coordinator was a change, and the H R coordinator, um, was a change. And, um, I think there are some conditions, we made some changes to three, which is that big broad, um, lots of stuff area, so field versus maintenance versus cafeteria, I'll, um, specify those now in line three. So, so this is almost, um, just a clerical change rather than any really substantial change, but we wanted to make sure it was clear.
I have a really dumb question, but the range numbers, that's just a classification to group those, and because they are a similar pay scale.
Right.
Okay.
That's just the, it's the row.
It's that row.
So, row three, that's our, our first row, and it starts with the fifteen fifty.
Fifteen fifty.
And moves up the steps as they get.
And the steps are actually years of experience?
Years of experience, right.
Okay, and is there another option for, uh, certifications and, you know, education, is that, how's that handled?
As far as this goes, as far as the classified.
General.
So, in general. So in general, it's based on the expectations of the jobs. So for classified, um, you don't move up in your job position because you get um, more training unless we've decided that more training is required.
Right.
So we, we might say, for example, this position requires more training, we'll hire you for it and you'll be expected to do that training. This is just my thing.
Right.
Not in policy anywhere else. So that's, thanks for asking the question. So we would do it that way. Um, as opposed to the uh, teachers, the credentials, whereas it's established that if they get uh, more training, they get
Right.
a higher pay level. So it's a little different. And that's just really standard classified versus, it's just the way those positions are treated um, through the industry of education. So I'm just following that.
Standards, yeah.
It's got a standard.
That's a good, that's what I thought was going on.
I remember seeing that one with the different, Walrus certification, this is the master, this is the teaching credential.
And that's the, that's the um, teacher pay scale.
Correct. Do we need to approve it again as the draft is?
Yeah, just to make sure.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated classified pay scale.
Thank you, Becky.
I'll second the motion, this is Leanna.
Thank you, Leanna. I'm gonna call someone else. Okay, I'll take the vote pen. Um, Tricia?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Laurel? Got it. And Leanna?
Aye.
All right, we're moving right along. I believe I love the approval of the, one more thing is the school calendar.
Yes.
I just wanna say for you guys that thank you for not doing what Chico Unified School did and broke it up a Monday here and a Monday there. But the last president said, that was the first time they'd done that.
Oh my goodness.
And I was like, not up.
I loved it.
Friday, Monday.
Yeah.
The kids needed it, we all needed it. So I still have to say, I love that.
So um, this is twenty three, twenty four proposed calendar. It has gone um, through our leadership team, which is a representative, represents all um, staff at um, the school and has um, gone through faculty also. So goes through leadership, then goes to faculty and then um, back to you. Um, the one major change, if you'll show the November. So the one major change that we've done this year, previously we have three half days for um, for teacher conferences. And um, we went back to, the teachers brought this back, a couple of them, so we brought it to faculty and, and they asked for this. And instead of three half days, we have one half day and one full day. Um, the struggle that they were having is to teach a half day and then flip and do the others. So um, you know, with the clarity that they don't have to do all of their teacher conferences in that day and a half, that they have uh, a couple of weeks before that November break to really get those done so they can schedule around parent needs and so on.
No, you can never get them all.
But um, but that was, that's what uh, they asked for and we're proposing to you. What that does as far as the school calendar goes though, is it drops us from a hundred and seventy seven um, school days to a hundred and seventy six. Um, we are still within, we'll still do the same number of minutes, um, though I may have to adjust the daily minutes, like instead of three oh eight, they give a three ten, I have to play with that a little bit, but um, but uh, so they'll have the same level of instructional minutes, just a half day to a full day is not a big change. Um, and so I wanted to express that also as we work on the after-school instead of learning grant, um, I can see that that will offset, so that would then the seventh day, seventeenth would be a day that we would offer an additional program so that families that needed, needed someplace for their kids to be would still be able to be here. So those, so that would, I think, offset some of the issues that come along with giving a hundred and seventy six days. So.
And again, the grays, they're in service days?
Yeah, right. So that's why it says like seventeenth is a work day. So the, the teachers will be here, it's a work day for teachers.
Oh, the tenth is um, the Veterans Day, that's why.
Wait, why is it red? That's why, okay.
And then, so this, I know this year I know our holiday schedule is different than Chico Unified.
So we're doing, we all might check it.
Yeah, but we're going to.
But we're going back to.
To line up with it.
Like lines for the parents. And we also, we had to provide our own meals for kids that week because Chico Unified didn't provide any meals. So it's had, the, the biggest expense was what Kendra gets to tamper with. But, so we did find, but it is that we didn't have um, there's the regular services that we get from Chico Unified.
So we go all the way, well, we go all the way until Christmas, or it's last, this last year we, we took, when in Christmas fall, you know, it falls.
Yeah, so last year Christmas fell on
Saturday.
Saturday or Saturday, I mean, or Sunday, so.
Yeah, the week before.
So we had, we were right before Christmas Eve.
But then we came back like right after New Year's.
So this year we'll have those two days before Christmas, so yeah.
And they're half days.
It's not quite so, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not quite so heavy.
Yeah. Everybody is.
Yeah.
Even the kids. Yeah, yeah, it's so hard.
Well, that's good.
Then we'll have a nice week after the first, so that's always nice.
So I have a question, I know that people ask me this, and I'm sure it's been asked multiple times. Is there a reason we do our half days on Thursdays and not Fridays? Okay, as long as it.
It's a, it's a staff issue.
Yeah, okay. I just know parent, I got parents, it'd be nice if it was Fridays where we can tell them, you know. So something that's been considered and it doesn't work out for staff.
Yeah, it's a staff, it's a staff issue. If you want, I have some more questions.
Okay.
Oh, you have to say that.
Okay.
Um, we're ready. I'll entertain a motion then.
Um, this is Tricia, I will accept the twenty twenty three, twenty four school calendar.
Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you, I will second it.
All right, Becky. You're giving next week off. Let's take a vote. Um, Leanna?
Aye.
Laurel? Becky?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, so the three calendar, moving forward. That brings us to four point ten, second interim report.
So I will turn this one over to Jim if he's here, so he can talk about that.
Jim? We should put him at three, just.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, we should think about that, we shouldn't have put him.
We should ask you, Jim, would you like earlier or later? Would you like, will we eat dinner then come in or?
This works just fine. Um, actually, yeah, if you wanna call it up on screen again.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess if you have it here, it's probably easier. Uh, but the second interim is actually, it's the report out, mandatory report out, but it's the same information as the January financial update. So um, nothing here that wasn't already included. Just taking your January information and um, leading into the mandatory report to the state. So if we weren't, if we weren't meeting every month, this would be a critical check-in point, but fortunately, we're meeting a lot more often. So it's, it's just, it starts with, because the state hasn't seen this every month, they're asking, okay, where were you at? First interim was October, second interim is January. So it says, okay, where were you at at first interim? And so then it's comparing how, how the school is updating. So we have our, what we reported in October, what's happened year to date in January, like we do in the financial report. And then the last section is called the second interim budget, is saying, here's where we believe the school will end as of um, our January model. And so the reason we have a lot of variance between actuals through January and the projection for the year, which is something we, we talk about a lot in the financial update each month, is there's just a lot of revenue being backloaded into the end of the year. So it's, it's still there, it's still, it's still part of the model. It's just being recognized on a cash basis until the end of the year, and so it's just not in the, not received as of Jan. About, yeah, about two million versus about four point three million total revenue. Are there, are there any questions about the second interim reports and in that way, the, the January financial update?
No question. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Does he have to do the audit report, is that?
No, that's me.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it.
So he does, you need me, do need to accept.
Oh, excuse me, sorry about that, that's right, updated in a second. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the second report.
I'll make a motion to accept the second interim report.
Becky, Becky?
This is Tricia, I'll second that.
I know.
I appreciate it very much, thank you. Making my first meeting, very. Uh, Tricia?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Kristin, myself, aye. Laurel? Oh, sorry, that's why I keep getting confused, I was thinking of the man. And Leanna?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, um, brings us to four point eleven, the audit report.
Okay, this is the audit report. Um, it was a little late this year, we had to go back, um, we got close to the end, we had it in December and got close to the end and then had it asked for an extension with Chico Unified for our auditors. Um, they realized they needed a little bit of independent study work last year, there's so many changes last year. And it came actually down to like the eighth of December, and we were already given what they needed, but they're like, we can't get it done to this. So we of course told the auditors to be able to do their job, their due diligence appropriately. So um, we asked Chico Unified, and they were very gracious in accepting of extending it, and so we, we were able to complete it by the January three first. Thank you very much to the front office staff for some very hard weeks of work, but um, we, it was, they were able to get done and of course, as Chelsea would tell you, she always looks at the last page first. And um, there are no exceptions this year, so we were found to be completely compliant. And so we were appreciative of that, so. So I, we are asking you to approve the audit report.
Yeah, just with our exceptions. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
This is Tricia, I will make a motion to approve the audit report.
Can I, go ahead.
Can I also?
You can.
Yeah, I think you can.
You can.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You, you can.
Yeah, I was still bad with, you're the guys, go ahead, you go ahead.
You're uh, you're actually doing most of the work, so they, they.
All right, I will second the motion.
We said Tricia and Becky again.
Next one.
All right, taking a vote. Tricia?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Laurel? And Leanna?
Aye.
Kristen, aye. And this one, I'm very excited about, four point twelve.
Really nice, good step forward.
Oh, good, good to see you.
All right, so um, with your approval, we went forward and um, applied for the after-school education safety grant, um, estimate, potential estimate is about sixty four thousand. This is really focused on middle school and improving our after-school programs for our middle school students. This is something that's been in our strategic plan for years. So um, it was not a guarantee, we definitely qualify for it, um, but of course, it's, it's money that's been going out to school for years. And only money that isn't claimed by other schools will be available. So um, the that's the bad news is it's not like we're the first ones out there and um, we're in the list. Um, the um, the other questionable news is that it's, it's really only gone to schools, last year I went to schools with over sixty percent um, low income and we're not that high. So um,
What is our?
Ours is fifty eight, I believe. So um, you know, so we may not get it for those two reasons, but they did encourage me to go ahead and apply. And knowing that enrollment in, um, it's based on enrollment enrollment in the city, helping us a whole is down. So I'm hopeful that there will be some money available. But um, if we don't get it this year, we'll just continue to apply.
And it couldn't be more perfect since we are staying here for two more years to utilize that, that whole like staffing, it's totally a part of our contract, so staffing and supplies and that all.
Yeah, so, so um, what um, Riley has been looking on as, as far as extending the learning plan also, is really looking at middle school as being more of extending our club situation. You know, you, you heard about um, from Claire and the after-school club she has, um, twice a week, we have homework club twice a week, that's well, those are well attended, and so it's just to increase maybe to, to, to clubs and have that so somebody can come five days a week or they can just come on a double day schedule. So that it's, it's intended for that. Just expand.
Still have a dream to just ban that, I wish when I could get off the three to come do that. But.
Okay, great.
Let's just want them, fingers crossed. So no approval, right?
No approval, you approved me to apply for it, this is an exception.
Well, that's Riley's work. Thank you, Riley.
Yeah.
Right?
And you said, well, I did the writing, but she did the lot. She gave me the information and allowed me.
So it was a, it was a team.
Good.
A team effort.
All right, and that brings us to four point thirteen, the performance review from executive director. Those are just getting it made together.
Yeah, yes, it's a bit, you need to appoint at least one person to edit it up.
Oh, review, I read something without even having to start back reading for a report. Sorry, that's what I mind doing. Okay.
So Laurel can talk, she's always our most fun as well.
I know.
Uh, last year, did you do it?
No, last year it was Laurel and Chelsea and.
No, it was Amber, myself and.
Oh, Amber.
Amber. Got it, okay. So I, I also would like to pass the ball, because I know I'm gonna have surgery, it'll be hard for me to get together, so if someone else wants to.
I did it with Laurel and Chelsea once, so I'm having.
Laurel and Chelsea for sure, maybe.
We tried to have this done by June, July, right? Is that the goal?
Well, I think you're supposed to have it done in March. But you're supposed to tell me about what you want for next year before March.
Before the end of April?
You've never told me you want to leave, so we, we've got one. But that, that the actual, what you're supposed to do.
So we should be delivering the review in March.
In March, you should.
Okay, so we should, so, put that on. Um, maybe it should be maybe formed in like December?
It probably should be, yeah. And you probably need it earlier on the agenda, but it's one of those things that I'm like.
Especially since December, it seemed like it was short, that'd be an easy thing to add to the agenda, yeah, instead of the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is two enough or do we need three? Or is Laurel and Chelsea enough?
Laurel's in our hand, can we hear you, Laurel?
Oh, you said yourself.
No, I will.
Oh, Becky, I'm sorry.
We can't hear you.
Laurel now.
Can't hear you.
She's, she's uh, muted.
No, I just.
Maybe I should call her on my phone. And then we can hear her.
Can you type in your chat?
Okay. Can you?
Oh, yeah.
Can you hear me? Yeah. So I think it'd be, it could be helpful this time to have three people. And I would be willing, I, I don't wanna, that sounds terrible. I would be happy if uh, anybody would like me to be on the committee, but if there are other people, I um, I waive that, just whatever.
No, we, we'll have you down then. That's great, because Chelsea's not here to actually say, although I don't know, as chair, does she have to give her the review? No, we, we'll have you down then, that's great, because Chelsea's not here to actually say, although I don't know, as chair, does she have to give her the review? So at the moment, we have you, Vicky, and Chelsea, so it'd be great to have three, just in case Chelsea.
Wait a minute, we're, we're, I'm telling Chelsea.
Well, we'll have to ask her. That's why it's good to have at least three tonight, like you do, plus her, in case she can't.
I know, I'm, my schedule is.
We're in finance as well.
No, I'm not, I just, I have a lot going on, very busy with work and everything, so, I would, I mean, if I, if Chelsea doesn't wanna do it all, that's. Just set that, but.
Set that a little over.
Be over, okay, I'm good.
Reminder, you're live. Okay, well, this, we have Laurel and Vicky for sure, Chelsea and me.
Right.
Awesome, and that is, brings us to now, that's what I thought that was. Two five, executive, all right.
All right, there we go, it feels like Valentine's Day was. Not for you, but still, I like to put that, so favorite moments, I, I think that this also was in the, mine's have also been in the slideshow. The kids going into kindergarten and really spending time there, so the fourth graders, we had the sixth graders, I think you saw the fourth graders also went, and, so. Katie, I have a, I have a small problem, I lost my buddy, and just out of thin air, actually, under a bench, out pops their buddy, so it's just that, that, that kind of kindergarten thing. So, so really, I liked the Joe, Joe Tooten belly, so they, you see the kids, I don't know if you know, that they've got their backpacks under their coats in front of them. Walking around like this, quite fun. And then, it's just, yeah, so the pictures of the seventh graders hanging out in the kindergarten class, it's just really precious. Helping out the kindergarteners, or making birthday, I don't know, so that's it. Our new aide Emily showed up a couple of weeks ago, Vanna, so we do have all of our aide staff supported, so that's a good feeling. We, the grants, the After-School Education and Safety Grant, which we discussed, I have been applying for. The, there is a pot of funding, I was getting a lot, quite a bit of questions about it, it's an employee retention tax cut that kind of goes along with PPP, but doesn't replace the PPP. So some money, one to two hundred thousand probably for us, potentially, so we, I was getting like all of these like spam emails from different companies. And so finally, I reached out to Jim and say, hey, this is somebody that you've seen on your charter schools work with successfully, and so we are working with the experience who you have probably heard of, they do the credit ratings. And so to work with us to bring in that funding, so that's, so we're working on that, and hopefully that again will help us see our finances. Riley is continuing to work with us on the preschool program, and at preschool program, so we're working on that. The audit that was completed, we've talked about that, and then the Scholastic Book Fair is right now next door, thank you very much, Alex. There's a dance this Friday with seventh grade, Cupid something, whatever.
As I said, there's a little bit of upset sixth graders, it's, now it's spring, what, now it's spring, I can't wear a Valentine dress.
Two weeks after Valentine's, it's just too late, I know.
A whole sixth grade can't.
But it, but it, there it is, so there's a dance, and then Girls on the Run again, thanks to Alex and other staff members, it's just one of my favorite programs. So if you don't know about Girls on the Run, all girls should be in Girls on the Run, that's something I like. Supporting staff, we did a survey of faculty, and this was kind of a fun, interesting thing about ways that we could help, you know, with positive, and one of them is that they wanted more living plants in the school. So then somebody has to take care of them, so just be prepared for that, but I thought that was it, and I can't, we're all reviewing on that. Our wellness room, Amber Bass wrote this up on what's going on with the, the. Everybody does a stretch. That, so we have six, we have psychology and social worker interns in there to be available, kids have made the wellness room available for them, and that's really as the space for kids who are feeling a need for some, have anxiety or feeling need to be, have quite a kind place to be, really encourage them only to be there for ten minutes or so, because a lot of them wouldn't be there all day, they wouldn't be there all day, but it is that kind of, yeah, place or space when they're having a hard day. And then she is working on having food available, not only for kids when they're hungry, that's been traditional, but also to have it available for, as like food drive, for families that are struggling. Sometimes we'll find out at the end of the month, the kids, the kids will say they're really hungry, and we'll find out there's dinner, breakfast, or dinner, and so to have some additional money for that. The, we're working with a forest therapy program at Chico State, and working on a middle school survey for mental health assessments.
What is a forest therapy, what, a, a therapy program, so is that, this, that's a one of ours, do you want me?
Well, we had, we had, they come from Chico State, if you ever walk in the forest and just kind of feel the feeling of being calmer and. And connected, so they're actually, so they actually take groups through that kind of a program. They actually go out into the forest and take, so we're working.
Is it the one closer to where they, also that they are gonna meet, that they have at the back, it's all the ladies.
I believe that's.
Beautiful, beautiful.
There?
I don't, I forgot what, at the end of one street.
Are you talking about their experimental forestation?
Yeah, yeah, for Chico State, yeah.
And then we've talked about the support for, for Jen, her gratitude for everything, and she is working on some fundraisers that she's been doing too. She was here on campus visiting yesterday, did you know that? She's very positive and, and doing well, although she has no hair. Anyway, she's great, but let me show you, right? So she's, she seems to be doing well and feeling most supportive. And then the task force recorded our meeting.
That's my report, I like the colors. Thank you, I'm trying to. I'm sorry to jump back, but the student survey for middle school, how would that be done?
It would be done online, it would be either a Google Doc, and what I'm wanting to do is actually have the student council help write it. So that's kind of.
Well, thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, and for your flexibility and being able to come.
No problem, only your, oh, we.
I take one during this month, because at the end of the month, better than two the next month.
Right.
And so, with that, next meeting is Tuesday, March twenty-first, six P M, and that brings us to seven, and adjournment.
And that's the week after, right?
Yes.
The week after.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, have a good night, stay warm.